Hello and welcome to the September 22nd, 2022 San Francisco Guido Creek JPA meeting. Drew Combs, chairing the meeting in the absence of Chair Abrika, and I'll ask Nico to call, call the role.
Director Combs?
Here.
Director Bert?
Here.
Director Kremen?
Here.
Director Pine?
Here.
And Director Abrika is absent at the moment.
Thanks. With that, we'll go on to agenda item number two, approval of the agenda. And so are there any, any changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
We have a person and a second, so I'm sorry. You can go, me comes.
Okay, go ahead and take a vote. Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Bert?
Yes.
Director Kremen?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Great. All right. With that, we'll, we'll move on to public comment for non-agendized items. So any individual who would like to make a comment to, to the JPA on an item not agendized can, can ask for recognition and you'll be able to make a three-minute comment.
Okay, I have not received any request to speak at this moment. Would anyone from the public like to make a comment at this time? Okay, I see no hands raised and nothing in the chat.
Thank you. Okay, but that will go on to the consent calendar. Are there any comments or questions with regards to the consent, consent items? If, if not, I can entertain a motion to approve the, the consent calendar consent.
I'm making a motion. I can.
Booing things right along.
Okay, go ahead and take a vote. Director Combs?
Yes.
Director Bert?
Yes.
Director Kremen?
Yes.
Director Pine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Right. And that was, that covered both consent.
Yes, that covered the consent agenda, both items. Thank you.
Okay, cool. All right. With that, we can go into information items and our first information item is the executive director's report.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I assume that folks have read the director's report in your board packet. So I am just going to touch on topics briefly. That'll leave time for questions. If anything comes up at the end of this, we can go back to specific items or we can follow up separately if you'd like some more detailed information. There have been ongoing discussions, as you know, about how to handle the top of bank structures on both sides of the creek downstream from the Newell Bridge. We have had our colleagues at Valley Water doing surveys of those structures and have recently issued a request for proposals for a supplemental EIR for the work that may need to be done associated with those structures. There's more information probably forthcoming in the next several weeks. But what's looking realistic is that those structures are going to need to be replaced rather than repaired. And there is ongoing evaluation as to the method of that repair and its cost. So I just wanted to put a placeholder in everyone's attention that that is an emerging issue that has ramifications for our permits, not an insurmountable issue. It's just more like merging into a, an already moving stream of traffic. And also for the sequence of our project work and obviously for the budget of the project. When more information is available, it will be included in next month's board update. We had a very successful annual maintenance walk. There are, there will be details of that available once all of the information is tallied. But all of our member agencies participated in that. And according to Kevin and Tess, what was found in the stream this year is about the same as we expect to see and have seen every year. It's, there's nothing startling or new. Our progress with the Army Corps of Engineers continues. The CAP-205 program is moving ahead and we have checked the box on the tentatively selected plan and are checking off additional boxes, for example, the public involvement plan and, and other required reviews. So that is moving along pretty close to on target. Our, our project manager, Jamie O'Halloran says we're maybe a little bit behind schedule, but in some ways, but in other ways, we're moving along ahead of schedule. So all, all things considered, moving along very well. Channel widening sites, there have been ongoing discussions with our colleagues at Valley Water regarding the kind of structures that are necessary to provide safe and secure bank stability in the channel widening sites. There is ongoing engineering analysis. And one of the things we've heard from our engineering colleagues at Valley Water is that the soil nail walls that were originally picked as the probable method of choice may have issues with deflection or twisting or bending under stress given the soil type that they are being adhered to or placed next to. Under seismic conditions or under high stresses, they may deflect, which could lead to undercutting or erosion and then deflection away from the bank and, and collapse. Our highest priority, of course, is community safety in the structure that we choose. So we have to make sure that whatever engineering framework is chosen is going to be the most durable and the safest for the project. Up until a couple of days ago, we were hearing that the system of choice may not be soil nail walls, but instead would be sheet piles with some additional piling structure support. What we've heard yesterday's Reach Two program team update is they are now reconsidering that approach and they are going back to the drawing board for looking at other kinds of wall structures that may or may not involve tiebacks, which are pre-stressed structural underground structures or soldier pile walls. So I think I, all I can say is this particular component of our work is still a work in progress. And I am hoping that our colleagues at Valley Water will be able to, no pun intended, nail down what is the best structure for the soil type, the hydraulic load and pressure, the the seismic stability and the constructability for these channel widening sites so that we can soon pick a type. So for Reach Two, the next topic is funding. We have, as, as you read in your packet, some good news, of course, about the Pope Chaucer Bridge HMGP funding coming through and another HMGP grant for channel widening that may not, in fact, likely not. For whatever reason, CALOES and FEMA have asked for some oddly elaborate data, base flood elevation surveys for every structure within the floodplain, which is a huge amount of analysis for a not very large grant compared to that level of analysis. And in a time that was incredibly unrealistic, they requested that information in a two-week period. And when we looked at what it would take to actually compile that information, it's an expensive grant and expensive contract in a year of work. So we are stepping away from that second channel widening HMGP grant and maybe looking for other kinds of grant funding to backfill that particular opportunity. I'm going to forward. There we go. Reach Three project update. Wooderton Current is in the midst of preparing a cost-benefit analysis for the upstream stream detention, and we will feature that as a special presentation and discussion on a board agenda later this year, probably November or December. Safer Bay project updates include the conclusion of our notice of preparation process. The comment period closed at the end of July. We, as you know, had several very good comments from a wide range of stakeholders and community members. And again, thank you to everyone who commented. On the funding front, we have been notified of the successful award of the Measure AA million dollars for initial design, planning and geotechnical work, which complements the Phase One funding that we have been notified of that the HMGP grant will fund in the near future. While we've been notified of that award, we haven't yet seen the scheduled date for a kickoff meeting, but we anticipate that anytime now. And in anticipation of that, we in the city of East Palo Alto are hashing out the details of a memorandum of understanding. We have a quick update. We've moved. Please note our address change in the signature block of all of our email messages. The members agreement is going through final rounds of discussion and edits. Please anticipate that on your board agenda next month, along with a conflict of interest policy update. And in terms of emergency preparedness, wanted to thank Chief Ken Duker at the City of Palo Alto for coordinating an upcoming December 6th tabletop live and in-person multi-coordinating committee, the multi-agency coordinating committee or MAC is meeting for the first time in two years in person to do a tabletop exercise. Of that, we are all looking forward to. And that's the, the director's report. Any, any questions before I move on?
Is it okay, Clark Harris Parker, if we go for a public comment on the director's report? And then we'll come back to the virtual dais for any comments or observations from, from the board.
Yes. Would any member of the public like to speak on agenda item number five? Executive Director's report. If so, you can unmute yourself. And Jerry Hearn, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Margaret, for, for that nice report. I just wanted to report that I was at the cleanup last Saturday and we brought out about at least a ton of both recyclable and non-recyclable stuff. And I want to just give a little shout out to the, the staff from Menlo Park who helped setting everything up. And also they were willing to recycle all the metal, which, which is, which is great because there's an awful lot of sharpening carts and things like that. So it went really well. And I would also agree that it looks like it's about the same amount of trash that we normally see.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. Naomi Goodman?
Yeah, hi. I have a question about the channel widening areas. In the draft EIR, as you mentioned, you proposed the soil nail walls. Your most recent update said that they might have to go with metal pile walls. But are you planning to consult with the California Department of Fish and Game on the ultimate selection? Because I noted that in the draft DEIR, they recommended that you try to put in gentler slopes that would allow for vegetation and enhancement of the screened fish.
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. Unfortunately, in these parts of the channel, it's really, really narrow. And so laying back the bank would mean taking a significant amount of private property. And, and that is both costly and legally difficult. So we are also faced with the conundrum of working with soils that are very loose and, and not particularly seismically stable. So when the engineers look at all the different soil characteristics, they have to figure out the best kind of bank treatment that will withstand both water pressure and how this structure would, would hold up to a seismic event. And this stuff is kind of loose and fluffy. So they're, they're still struggling to try and find the right combination of buildability, strength and security. And, you know, and, and sort of meeting all of the functional criteria for, for durability. What we're trying, we are absolutely working very closely with the regulatory agencies, with the wildlife agencies and with the Regional Water Quality Control Board. And we are, we are carefully considering all of their requirements. When we design the, the bottom part of the channel, it is going to be as, as natural as we can make it from the fish's point of view. So for the creatures that are living and making a home in the creek, in the channel and, and, and near the banks, for those critters, we're trying to make it as natural as possible. The bank, however, you know, it's, it's going to be some pretty hardscaped thing in those channel widening locations. Naomi, I hope I answered your question. It was a really good question.
Yeah, thank you. I, I hope that the design and areas will be available to the public. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, it will be.
Dennis Parker?
Hi, this is Dennis. I just wanted to give a compliment to Margaret Bruce on the presentation yesterday at the East Palo Alto Public Works and Transportation Commission meeting. There was a lot of concern about interruptions, about noise and dust and detours and the rest of it. But I think Margaret made it clear that this is the reality of working to improve our community, to make them safe. And that this is what it's all about. But she explained to them that the JPA does have empathy. They are listening. They are concerned and they're doing everything possible to mitigate and reduce those interruptions and those discomforts. But the community must understand that that's what it takes to do the kind of major construction needed to make the community safe. So I applaud you. I have seen that in the past, but I'm going to show the rest of the community has been able to see how those attributes had been applied to earlier construction projects. So I applaud you, Margaret, for your, your kind words and your sense of empathy and humor when appropriate to spread the word and to try to mitigate some of the concerns of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
We also have a request for Jim Wiley.
Hello, this is Jim Wiley. I have a comment and a question. At the beginning of the presentation, Margaret mentioned that the top of bank structures that need to be replaced are downstream of the Newell Street Bridge. And then we went into a conversation about soil walls, soil nail walls not being adequate. I'd like to know whether the proposed soil nail walls between the Chaucer Street Bridge and the Newell Street Bridge are part of this conversation or not.
Good question. No, they're not. There are two separate kinds of structures. One is within the channel. The other is on top of the bank.
My question, excuse me, is are you proposing to abandon soil nail walls between the Chaucer Street Bridge and the Newell Street Bridge in the channel widening locations? Is that?
It depends on what our engineers at Valley Water recommend. Right now, they're doing a careful reanalysis based on more information about the soil types and the seismic loading and the hydraulic loading in those channel widening areas. Up until very recently, we had been operating on the fairly firm presumption that soil nail walls were going to be the, the structure of choice. And recently, there have been some re-analyses of that, those soil conditions and other conditions and a reconsideration of whether or not soil nail walls really are the safest and most durable approach for those areas. So they may end up being that, but there is now some consideration of at least a couple, maybe three other treatment types that we might look at. And again, the, the highest priority is what is safest and most durable for the community in the conditions where those features are going to be applied. So when the engineers are done checking and re-check, rechecking their numbers, we should have something more definitive. But as I said, up until recently, we had thought that the soil nail walls were the treatment of choice, but that may not be so. In other words, I, I don't mean to be flip, but maybe we'll check back in again in a month and, and we may have more up-to-date calculations and information.
Thank you very much. Good answer.
Margaret, just really quickly following up on that point. And Joe, can you remind us what are the channel widening sites?
Okay. So there are channel widening sites. Let me see if, actually, can, can one of myself, Kevin, I see you online. Maybe we could do a screen share if, if the community could pause for just a moment. If Kevin, if you have a slide available that you could pop up visually so that we could.
I, I do. It's going to take a moment to pull up, but I can just verbally respond to that. So there are two widening sites upstream of University Avenue. And there are, one will be a, a channel widening where there would be some type of wall application. And another is going to be where we remove a big concrete structure that's there and we would, we will have room to lay the bank, the bank back and replace what we remove with riparian vegetation. And then there's a widening site between the Pope Chaucer Bridge and the Newell Road Bridge and one downstream of Newell Road Bridge that are very similar on the Palo Alto side. And then there's a fifth widening site just upstream of West Bay Shore Road, which is going to be included in all of our planning documents. But at this point in time, we're not sure if we will need to build that eventually or not. We're still, still analyzing that site. And if you want to move on and give me a minute, I might be able to find a good graphic for that.
Sure. While, while we are pausing for a moment, while Kevin looks for that visual, which might be helpful to refresh everyone's memory about where the widening sites are, I do want to make one small announcement. Every year, we review and revise our comprehensive plan. This year's update has some extensive additions specifically around groundwater. And we would like to, we're going to be releasing this for public comment on Monday. We'll be posting it to the newsletter and posting it to our website. So please be on the lookout for that. And we would welcome your comments, large or small, by Friday, October 28th. This will be available for, it'll be on the November board agenda for, for the board's consideration for adoption.
And just for, for my meeting management, Director Bruce, that was all for, that was 5B, right? That, that was the entirety of that.
That's the entirety of that. And so if we still want to wait for Kevin's screen share of the channel widening sites, we can wait for a moment or we can move on.
Yeah, just so we can do a, a last call. Is, is there any more public comments on? I, I guess on this point, we can do either 5A or 5B as, as we, we wait for.
I do have the screen up if I could be allowed to share.
Yep, I'm going to pause mine. I think you can. Do I need to let you share or?
I'm, I'm going to find out in just a second. Forgive me, I'm flipping back from window to window. Looks like I can do it. Okay, so just to run over the, first of all, can you see the, the screen?
Yep.
Okay, so can, can you see my pointer? Okay, so the two sites that I mentioned just upstream of, of University, here's, here's University Avenue right here. Here's, here's Highway 101. So this, this kind of yellow area is actually two sites. What we call Site One is on the Palo Alto side. And it runs about half of the distance of this yellow portion. Actually, it's, this is a little bit deceiving because the yellow portion includes all of our access points as well. So it's not all of this that's going to be widened, but a lot of it will. And right about the end of the first widening site, the second widening site begins. But this one's on the East Palo Alto side. And this is where we have a bunch of room at the top of bank where we can lay back and, and regrade. It's actually a very uncommon thing in this creek to have room to do this, but we do have room in this area. And then Sites Three and Four, as I mentioned, are downstream between University and Newell. And they're very close to each other. They're not, they don't represent the entirety of this portion of the channel, but we will be calculating our impacts for the entirety of the portion of the channel because we'll be moving equipment and materials throughout this entire reach. And these, this picture is representative of what the top of, kind of what it looks like now. We'll be cutting back this sacked concrete slope and then installing a new vertical feature, whichever type of wall we, we decided to be. And then I mentioned between downstream of Newell Road, it's just this fifth site here where the creek channel has been widened by the Caltrans project that we did collaboratively with them in, in 2017 to 19, thereabouts. And the channel may be widened here to align with the fourth barrel that was installed at that time. So those are the why we want to talk about widening sites. Those are widening. These four we know will build the upper creek one, the upper. The upper ones, one through four, and then this fifth one is a, we're still trying to evaluate whether or not it's necessary.
Okay. And just, just for, and I'll bring it back to the dais. And just so we're completely clear, for all of these widening sites, the wall treatment that will be used is currently in question. Correct?
That's correct. And this.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So there's a couple of different applications that we're looking at that would be more, as Margaret described, more structurally stable and seismically safe. But the, the new treatments won't be any, they won't be much different visually. And they won't represent any different kind of impact to the creek. It'll, it'll essentially be as designed. It'll just be a different type of wall. You won't be able to tell the difference by looking at it, other than if it's sheet piles, it'll be a different color.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll be, we don't have any more public comments on this. I'll bring it back to the, the directors to see if they have, have any questions or comments on, on either. Yeah, well, I see, I see Mr. Hearn. Sorry. Go, Jerry.
Yeah, I just got my hand in just at the last minute. Kevin, just, just for clarification, that fifth site downstream shows yellow on the other side of the. Yellow on the other side of the bridge. Is that just for access? There, I mean, that's all been completed on that site. If if I'm not incorrect.
Yeah, yes, that's correct, Jerry. Let me pull it back up so everyone knows what you're talking about. So the. The widening would take place upstream of West Bay Shore Road right here.
That's what I was, yeah.
Yeah, when we completed the downstream project and Palo Alto Pump Station was had considered this when it was designed and built. There was an access ramp created right here.
Yeah.
This is for two reasons, to access the creek for building more infrastructure when needed, but also. If there's any sediment management or anything else that needs to go on. So this is a, this is a pre-built access point and then we would use that to move equipment upstream. Eventually, the contractor would make the final decision as to how they put equipment into the creek, but this is, this is what we represented in the E I R.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure we weren't redoing something down below the the highway.
Very astute observation, Jerry.
Jim Wiley has a comment?
Would it be possible, Margaret, for you to, you or. Someone to show the top of bank, the Newell Street Bridge location and the top of bank of replacement locations on this map?
Um, it, we we could make a map. We don't have one currently. They are, they are still being surveyed. So I think we can do that in the future when we have more information and I can provide the board and the community a more comprehensive update.
And call us.
Thank you.
Really good. I see Ms. John has gone off mute. So I I think, do you want to make a comment, Ms. John?
This is Steve Schmidt. Could you? Tell us, there's a reference in the staff report to Site Five. Where is that on this, on this map?
If you can see where Kevin's cursor is right now, it's that U shape or horseshoe shaped bend in the creek. Just upstream of Highway 101.
Okay.
So is this four?
So four is is on the left side of the map. Is that correct?
That's correct. Three and four are are very near each other adjoining on the creek.
Okay, and is, are there any widening sites upstream of the? Not of Chaucer, of Newell, of the Newell Bridge?
Yes, there are two and and Kevin had described those earlier. Kevin, do you want to? Refresh people's memory on those two? Sites one and two?
So Newell Road is here, if you can see my cursor. And so the Sites Three and Four are upstream of Newell Road. Sites one and two are upstream of University. If you were to follow this creek off the map. It would make some several turns through East Palo Alto and get to Manalto Drive, at which point, if you made a left. You would arrive at the Pope Chaucer Bridge. So this is all down, downstream of Pope Chaucer Bridge closer to. University Avenue within Palo Alto and and East Palo Alto.
So there is no. Wide bank widening or channel widening near the Pope Chaucer Bridge. Once, once you're above Pope Chaucer. There's no bank stabilization work needed.
There, there is some work needed at the bridge itself and that's part of its design, but no separate channel widening is planned.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question.
One, one last call for for public comment. Okay, cool. All right, let's bring it back to to directors for 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 questions or comments. So it doesn't, it doesn't look like there's any any questions or comments from from the board. So. So then I think we can go on to the next agenda, which is a closed, a closed session. So, so yeah, so now the the JPA will go into closed session and report out. When that closed session has ended.
We take public comment?
Yeah, we should definitely do that.
Would any member of the public like to speak on agenda item number six, the closed session? Not saying any requests to speak. So if you hold on one moment, board members, I will go ahead and create the breakout room.
Do do really quickly, do we have an estimate on how long this closed session will be?
Director, it should be, it should be very quick.
Okay, so. Clark Harris Parker, are we all back? Are we still waiting for Director Crimmin?
Let me just see here. Yeah, I do not see that he has returned. It looks like he has logged off.
I wonder if he he accidentally pushed the wrong delete meeting and not leave room. But I think, I think we can, we still have quorum, right? So we can continue. All right, so I'll go to to. Ms. Ortiz to report out from the closed session.
Thank you, Director Combs. So we had a closed session on the matter of the Peter Joshua versus the San Francisco. Gito Creek and there, it's existing litigation and there's no reportable action today.
Thank you, Ms. Ortiz. And so we'll go on to agenda item number seven. Board member comments, information items, requests and announcements. So I'll go to the the board if there are any. Comments, questions. Okay, see, and should we take, do we take public comment on the board member? Questions, comments?
We take public comment on on everything, but there's nothing there, so.
Okay, well, just, okay, see, no, no hands raised, then I will go on to. Item seven, which is the German, and I see. Yeah, so. With that, then I think I will adjourn, adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for attending.
Thank you.